February twenty eighth, twenty twenty four to order at seven oh three. And we'll start out with roll call.
Steve Higginson, Lake Enchantment.
Bethany Cody, Lake Enchantment.
Jim Johnson, White Oak Drive.
Linda Winslow, Norwood Street.
Jason McCarthy, Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Approval of the agenda.
Make a motion, we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Session. On favor.
Aye.
Post. Minutes from the previous meeting of February fourteenth, twenty twenty four. I did notice there was a.
There was a couple in between the time that you got them today and I had time to reread them and I did make a couple changes. That copy that I just put in front of you should be the updated version.
Okay. I see it didn't get changed also, so I guess I'll just ask you about it. Motion carried four to nothing when there were only three commissioners.
Oh, right, those should all be three zeros. That's good to edit. Not very often they only have three. Okay.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes as revised.
I'll second that.
Session. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Post. Public comment, anyone wishing to speak right now, please come forward. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to six A, new business special use permit public hearing request. Proposed short term rental land used to be located at seventeen eighty five East Avenue in Marquette within the urban residential district. Parcel tax ID is five two zero eight three zero 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 two five zero zero. Applicant is Michelle Seibert, seventeen eighty five East Avenue from Marquette. Jason.
As the packet indicates, you have a copy of our staff report and the application for Ms. Seibert who is here tonight in the audience. And can answer any of the questions you may have from her, but we did receive a very nice application indeed, complete. And to utilize the current zoning that we have in effect for short term rentals in the urban residential district. She has paid the fee and submitted a complete application, so with your approval, we would ask that you would schedule a public hearing for Wednesday, April tenth at seven P M. Of course, if you have any questions of us or the applicant, please feel free.
Yeah, I'd like to, are there any other short term rentals in the vicinity of this request?
Do we include that map for you? You guys have that. Well, there might be one north of this on. But I think that's across the street from the Meisters, the former Meisters.
It is.
There's not a lot in the northeast quadrant of section sixteen.
Okay.
But we can, we'll provide that map with the proposed and the existing.
Okay.
With your next packet.
That'd be great.
So have.
That one on granite would probably be the closest, Steve.
There's two on granite, right, down there, or just one?
Oh, yeah, there's two.
So have you spoken with your neighbors about your plan? Can we ask her that? Yeah.
I've spoken with one of my neighbors, I haven't reached out to the other one yet.
Okay.
And did Eric make you aware of the tax implication if you rent your primary residence for more than fourteen days a year, you would lose your primary residence objection on your taxes?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And then one of our planning commissioners isn't here tonight, but he would ask for sure, a hundred percent, who's going to maintain the short term rental if it were to be approved?
Okay, I have a friend who does other, manages other short term rentals.
Okay.
I plan on having her.
Thank you.
So the car out there has his lights, right, coming at us. It's not at you, right, it was at me, but he's moving now. Okay, good.
Questions or motions or?
I'll make a motion to schedule the public hearing for Wednesday, April tenth, twenty twenty four.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries.
Thank you for being here and we'll see you again on Wednesday, April tenth. We'll all. Thank you.
Six B, zoning text amendment, public hearing request, proposed zoning text amendment to section fifteen point oh five of the market township zoning ordinance. Article twenty five, changes in amendments, amendment, section twenty five point oh two B, text amendments applicant is the shop diesel and auto repairer. Sixty-two forty U S forty-one West in Marquette. Jason.
So this is a, one of what could be a number of projects that come of the change of ownership from We Energies. Property that's been held by We Energies for more than fifty years. Coming now into private ownership and the ownership team along with Mr. Tolxdorf here, who's a broker for Mr. Stordy with the gravel pits, okay. Wanting to start selling off other properties now to the planning commission. Because we haven't had the chance yet to really look at this from a future land use standpoint, because it's been held by the same property owner forever, it hasn't been one of those really areas of interest. You know, it's all, it's all zone resource production essentially. And there's a twenty acre parcel on the northwest intersection of the five fifty roadway, the, and the, and the railroad, basically. So on the north side, you take a left on the new Fly Ash Road, immediately on the right side of the road on the north, there is a twenty acre parcel there. Which is zoned resource production. There is an interested party in purchasing that property, in fact, the purchase agreement is in the package, just so you know how, I guess, imminent that that development could be. And the idea is to put in a vehicle repair shop. To the south of the railroad tracks is our only segregated business or industrial zoning that we have in the community. From a land use standpoint, I thought it would be easier for the applicant to do a zoning text amendment to allow a specific land use as a special use in the resource production district than it would be to rezone property in industrial without any buffer to the residences in that immediate area to the north of that. There is a smattering of homes along County Road five fifty just north of the property there. And so what this request is, is to add vehicle sales, service and supply and repair to the resource production allowable uses as a special use. Which means anytime one would come, then it would be, the planning commission would be able to review it on an individual basis. Neighbors would be notified and they would have a duly called public hearing. So this is the kind of coaching, I guess, I did with the applicant, knowing both the developer and Mr. Tolxdorf. Right now, you can only do a vehicle repair shop in the general business district, which is right along the corridor. But I thought the planning commission might want to entertain the idea of having, you know, vehicle repair shops in other areas that might be suitable as well. And resource production certainly is one of those areas where it's, you know, mostly larger lots. In fact, the minimum lot size is forty acres, this is a lot of record. That's been, I actually contacted the county equalization and this has been on, on the tax roll as it is for more than fifty years. So the request of staff is to have a public hearing on April tenth to consider adding vehicle sales, repair and supply to the resource production zoning district as a special use.
Does, does this specific parcel front both five fifty and the Fly Ash Road?
Yeah, there's a little bit of wetland, there's a sliver of wetland through that area next to five fifty.
What, what is the minimum size for a resource production parcel?
Forty acres.
So it doesn't meet that size, is that correct, or it's contiguous with something else?
The standalone piece is twenty point something.
So it's, it's a nonconforming parcel?
It's, yeah, and it's been in existence since before zoning was in effect, so it's a developable lot, provided it needs setbacks. He's looking at putting in a fifty by one fifty shop.
Yeah. Okay.
Is it going to be facing five fifty?
No, it would be off of the Fly Ash, County Road H X, I believe it's called.
If you have any questions, you can. On the building or respects. The wetland is only less than point one acres, I'm also a forester, maybe I have some wetlands. Just gonna check, but yeah, that, that corner is a little piece, it'd be just off there, but it's the ideal location, you're right there in the corner of five fifty and that.
No.
And also it's, he's also a diesel expert mechanic besides auto mechanic. So that'd be ideal for trucks that are going back for it, especially when you have mine and so forth and issues and so forth like that. Location is right there, but.
What, what's the status of that road now, is that a county road then now?
It is open to the public, guardrails are in, I'm sure they'll do some striping in the, in the spring, but it's on, it's live.
So you're on.
Yep, and it's a classic road.
So it's plowed.
Yes.
Does that go all the way through to somewhere then?
Right now, it comes to a T, if it goes straight, you go into the Fly Ash site, which is still being maintained and will be for years. And then if you go left, it would come back out to where the Forestville Trailhead would be. And that's the segment that we're hoping gets more formalized in the future so that you could utilize Forestville and come all the way around and, and out to the north. Kind of a mini bypass.
Would it come out to Forestville Road then if you kept going on it?
It, it does now if you know how to navigate it.
Okay.
But it's unimproved and gravel and ruddy and goes across the tracks, I mean, the tracks will still be there clearly, but perhaps there's a different way to do it.
So let me ask you, the parcel we're considering directly to the north of that, what is that zone? Is that resource production as well?
It is, yes, sir.
Okay, on both sides of five fifty?
Just one site.
Yeah, the zoning map should be in your package there.
And, and is there, is there, there's a small little parcel in there too, is that a five acre parcel just north of there? Kind of a convoluted looking couple parcels there.
Very, very north towards five fifty. Very far away from this parcel. It'd be the far easterly, southeastly parcel, major tract of a sold there, originally four hundred and sixty-five acres. That is only a little property text.
Is there a reason why we're not zoning this for the, the proper zoning for the, for the use that's going in there? Is it speed or is it, what, what's the rationale?
I guess it was my idea to consider allowing the land use as a special use rather than rezoning the entire property, knowing that we haven't had a chance to look at it from a future land use standpoint.
Yeah, okay.
And if you look at the land uses to the south and then immediately to the east across from there, there's basically a transfer station or a transformer. They're like uses.
Any more questions?
This will be scheduled on March?
No, April tenth, we try to save some money by having both the public hearings on the same day, because the mining journals like three hundred dollars in head. It just happened to be that these both kind of came in at the same time.
Okay. Can do a motion when anyone's ready. You okay with that?
I'll make the motion that we have a public hearing on April tenth for the proposed zoning text amendment, as in item six B.
I'll support that.
Further discussion?
Aye.
Aye.
Post.
See you then.
Seven A, unfinished business, short terminal discussion.
You know, I kept this on here as a placeholder and our, our staff planner is currently on his way downstate for a basketball playoff game. And I would assume that we would just carry this over to the next meeting, he's going to have some additional information for you, okay?
Okay. Correspondence, A A, proposed house bill number five four three eight.
Yep, so they keep pumping out these house bills with regard to short term rental and again, kind of curtailing some of our ability to both prohibit and or regulate them. In our case, we do allow short term rentals. I kind of highlighted the juicier sections of it, but there was also a section that was brought up by chairperson Johnson in a previous meeting between the board and ourselves, which looks like they're trying to get a tax out of them as well. So I just want to keep you guys apprised of some of these things that are coming out of, out of the house, we'll continue to monitor them. And it's more for your information, as is eight B.
So the highlighted thing in section eleven here of this house bill, do you find that to be onerous or do you find that to be?
This is actually more reasonable.
I was going to say, it seems reasonable.
Reasons, yeah.
Yeah.
I think it seems as long as the state's going to get some kickback.
Yeah.
Whether it be similar to the hotel tax or the like, that, that seems to be the common denominator in all of these bills.
So basically they're, they're putting a, a room tax?
Ish, yeah.
Seems like a, a lot more that's going to be added to the property owner there.
Yeah, it becomes more onerous and maybe starts to change the, swing the pendulum on them.
Looks like a five percent state tax and then O C O could be up to six percent. So it could be up to eleven percent.
Is they, is they hail the cosponsors, is that our hill, do you know?
No, oh, wait. It's right at the front of it, right?
Yeah.
It could very well be.
Not that uncommon name, but, yeah.
It was a pretty common name.
Yeah, right, okay.
But I can certainly find out. Interesting question. Any other questions on that one?
No, I guess I won't.
Yeah. Yep.
Anyone else have any more questions?
Nope.
Okay.
Eight B, David Pesla versus Marquette Charter Township, case number twenty-four, six three three eight eight. Eight A, Jason.
Yep, so the township was served, Mr. Pesla is here with his son-in-law and essentially they appealed to circuit court, the Z D A's decision to not hear an appeal, from what I understand. And so that's in this process and I just wanted to include that information for your information, so to keep you apprised of this data. I don't know if you guys have anything to add to that?
For time now.
You know, we talked about at the joint meeting, the importance of housing and then we also talked about the importance of safety and our road network and all the things that we're going to be working on through our master plan update process this year. And the fifty thousand dollar grant that we were awarded, so we're hoping to get in some, some good consultants that can help us navigate some of these things as the community continues to have development pressure for growth. And to be able to do it in a sustainable way that is safe and, you know, equitable for everybody, that's, that's our goal. Balance, we have balance. So, yeah, that also is just in there for information, I can try to answer any questions that you might have about it, but really it's, it's in the court's hands now and we'll see how it shakes out.
John, say there was a date, I can't remember if you said there was a date or not yet of our hearing.
I did not have one. I'm, I'm sure Roger.
Know if there was a date yet?
I doubt it, it just came, right?
I'm sure Roger will let us know and then you guys know as soon as I know.
You have any questions? Okay. Move on to the reports, Township Board report, Linda.
Well, we had a wonderful report, just given to all of us at our joint meeting with the Township Board. Lots of good discussion, talked about our survey for our master plan and that's kind of my direction. Make sure you fill out the survey if any of you get it, get it back to us. It won't be till probably a couple months.
Yeah, midsummer.
Midsummer, we'll, we'll put a big to do, maybe, maybe we'll do something at Community Day with it.
There you go. Any rec committee report? Yep, the rec committee met last month, I know. Earlier this month. Yeah, it's February. And we discussed the master plan update, although it's not the recreation plan, a recreation plan is kind of a component of or an appendancy of the master plan. I did provide them with the section on community services in the master plan for them to consider and look at and update, so I did give them some homework. And we did talk about, you know, recreation projects and funding and how we start funding some of the things that we believe our community's desires. Of course, we talked about that at our previous meeting tonight, but I think once we get our survey out and we've taken care of, other than some obviously very important intersections, we've taken care of most of the local roads through the road millage, which was also something that the residents decided to self-tax at a seventy percent yes rate. So I'm not sure if recreation millage is the answer, but I think that, you know, I've conveyed to the township board that I believe we need to find different mechanisms to fund recreational projects other than trying to get grants, which are nice when we get them, but we need to have a dig and kind of have some more skin in the game, if you will. So I think that message has been well received and again, I think our community survey now that we've taken care of, like I said, some of the local roads in Shrobridge and the other local roads in the network that we have on behalf of the road commission. And we've kept a fairly flat tax rate consistently, those are usually the two top things that people would say that the township board could do to make a difference. I think recreation's going to pop up there now and, and certainly housing, I'm sure is going to be a major discussion point of people and, you know, the cost of living, et cetera. But I'm hoping to get some good feedback on all of those things because, you know, as you know, the master plan covers a myriad of, of topics. But yeah, we're hoping to get some good feedback on recreation, not only the potential projects that could be out there, but also whether or not the community is willing to support them financially, because that's really what it comes down to. So they received that well and like I said, I gave them some homework for next month, so I will report back to you on that section of the master plan if they have any additions that they'd like to include or recommend to be included.
What do you think about the possibility of having some kind of a, you know, forming some group like they did in the city for the, to raise money for the new playground on Lower Harbor? Maybe seeing if there is some kind of group in the township that wanted to get together to try and do some fundraising for whatever people come up with in the master plan for suggestions?
Yeah, that was one of the, the things that, one of the ideas that came out of the rec committee meeting actually was figuring out different ways to, to fund projects, whether that be through, you know, a millage or, you know, specific projects that people would contribute to. So a good suggestion and one that we'll roll into this master plan update for goals and objectives.
Road Committee.
I believe the road committee meeting was canceled due to lack of agenda items.
In the zoning.
So yeah, I'm pretty steeped in the master plan update, so like I said, we did receive the fifty thousand dollar grant, which certainly cover us hiring a competent consultant from downstate to come and assist us. This will be the first time in my tenure here, thirteen years. And I believe our third master plan iteration or update where we have a bona fide planning consultant come in. So I'm excited about the opportunity there for that. So I've been researching different firms for our specific needs, one of them being housing, since the MISTA grant has to have some housing component to it. We can use it for the master plan update. We just have to emphasize housing a little bit more. I'm also hoping there'd be enough money left over to potentially, um, then redo our zoning ordinance to bring the master plan into, well, the master plan will be adopted and then typically what happens is the zoning ordinance coming in and it places up what the master plan says. So you set your goals and objectives and the ordinance is amended to kind of follow that. Not drastic changes, but small changes. And, um, I'm then going to be putting together a request for proposals to these different firms with very specific needs and requests. And there'll be, um, you know, a length of time that they'll be able to respond and then hopefully we'll get together and then we'll pick a firm that best suits us and then have a kickoff meeting and start the master plan process. So, um, a little bit more, I think it's gonna be a little bit more formal than we've done in the past where, you know, we may not always have that consultant here on site just because, you know, since the pandemic, it seems like there's a lot more things happening remotely. It may help our budget to not have to have him be here every meeting, but I would say, you know, kickoff meeting, um, some charrettes and some public input in the community room, those types of meetings. I suspect they'd have a representative here and then obviously they're, they're deliverable, which would be a new document. But all of our input in, intermingled in that as well. So that's what I've been working on mostly. Texas Roadhouse is open too.
So are we, we're open too?
Somehow they found their employees, apparently.
Half of Panero's employees.
Oh, really? Yeah, I was curious to see how they would staff that.
Okay.
Announcements?
So Jason, there's a meeting in March. Is it the first part of March that the planning commission might be interested about housing? Do you know about that? No. Okay, I'll ask the board and I'll make sure I send it out to everyone. I forgot, I forgot what the date was, but it's like in the middle of the day, of course. Yeah. I will do that. Lynn knows.
Is it part of the housing task force?
No, no, they're coming here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. No, it's not part of that.
Okay, yeah.
That I know of.
I was not aware of it, yeah.
Okay, all right. I will make sure I get that information like right now.
Thank you.
Nothing else going on with the five acres from Renner Bear or?
No, they did ask us to put in utilities last week, which we said we were not gonna do.
Oh, do they?
And by ordinance, we can't actually. By ordinance, the developer puts in the utilities to the respective Eagle, the state, county, and then the township takes ownership of them. That's the way that it works. They are constantly looking for ways to chisel away at costs, which is understandable. Um, but, you know, we were not willing to do that. At least, I'm not saying from my standpoint I wasn't, but my boss, supervisor, public works director and the zoning ordinance said no. So they have until April to execute that. Um, I'm not sure if they're gonna be able to get it done or not. I don't, I don't know. They had indicated that they were gonna have a PUD application to me, um, in late January. Still have not seen that.
Or?
Is the property line or the township city line on the south side of forty-one there like where the old market mall is?
It cuts across at an angle, goes from southwest to northeast, across the former Pizza Hut and then halfway through the villa. Very odd.
So on, or on the car wash side, is the car wash in the township?
No, car wash is in the city.
It's in the city?
Yeah.
Okay, what I'm kind of getting at is, I don't know if you've taken that road in the back of the mall there that kind of cuts through from, when you're coming from Harlow Farms over to, uh, Brookton Road. There's kind of like a rough road going back there.
Is that public?
Well, no. That's kind of what I, well, people have been using it.
Okay.
You know, for a couple of years now since they've torn things down. But I was just kind of wondering about, you know, trying to get some kind of a frontage road through there.
Oh, as that redevelops?
Well, it, it's kind of behind, you know, where all the, it goes behind the Dollar Store. It was in, it was in the back of the mall.
Yeah, delivery space for the old mall.
But it would, it would be nice if you could.
Yeah, you're welcome to send, uh, you know, correspondence to the city if you like or.
So I was asking if it was in township first, but.
Yeah. No, uh, it's not, it's not, um, it's not in the township. And from the redevelopment site plans that I've seen of the entities that I know that are gonna be there, um, there's connectivity between the properties, but not a frontage road. And it's actually safer because the connections is further south than the highway, so it's not happening right like, right next to the highway. It's further into the property, but they will, they'll, they'll all be connected in there. I think the city's ordinances cover that kind of thing. That's the best management practice.
Okay, any public comment?
Done with the announcements, right? He didn't have anything?
Okay. Any public comment from anyone? Nope. Okay. Additional comments from planning commissioners?
No.
None for me.
That's me. I don't have any either. So I guess we're adjourned at seven forty.